We have a quorum in the TC. How are you doing, Tom on the TPBB?
Hi, Joe. Could you send a link to Baltasar De Anda Santana, please? Thank you.
Oh, Baltasar's on. I see him there, Ann.
Five o'clock. You ready to go, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, well, I will call the Transportation Commission meeting for September 30th, 2020 to order.
And I will call the Transportation Policy and Planning Board for September 30th, 2020 to order as well. Uh, Joe, would you please do our virtual meeting instructions?
Uh, you bet. Uh, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is, all there's commission members and staff have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Commission members, please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the body, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Chairs, the floor is yours.
Thanks. Patrick, would you like to call the role for the TC, please?
Okay, Chris McHale.
Here.
Anne Kovach.
Here.
Jessica Piaz. It's not. Bill Bremer.
Here.
Okay, Ken Stride.
Here.
Bridget Brown. I see her.
Here.
Okay. And Grant Foster.
Here.
And Mike Tierney.
Here.
And Harold Kleens.
Here.
That's it for the TC.
Uh, Anne Trader, would you please call the role for the TPBB?
Audrey Lankella.
Here.
Baltasar De Anda Santana.
Here.
Chris McHale.
Here.
Eric Sunquist.
Here.
Grant Foster, you were here.
I'll hear him.
Um, Keith Furman.
Present.
Margaret Bergamini.
Present.
Rebecca Kemble.
Here.
Robert Burke.
Present.
Tom Wilson.
Here. All right, thank you. Um, welcome all to the joint meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board and the Transportation Commission. Just a reminder that panelists are responsible for muting and unmuting themselves. And with a meeting of this size, please pay attention to that. Just one or two people getting background noise can cause a lot of trouble for us. Do we have any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Um, are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the commission or the board? Please use the hand raised feature. Seeing none, we will begin with our first item of the evening, Legisstar 62325, Metro Transit Network Redesign Study Overview. Uh, I think we have a presentation by Jared Walker.
Yeah, um, I can, I can give a little, um, intro and then, and pass it off. Dan Constantino is, is on the team, um, with Jared Walker. Um, Dan, I don't know, is Jared on yet?
He was on a minute ago.
There he is. Hi, Jared. Um, so, uh, just a, a quick intro. Jared and his team have done extensive work throughout the country, um, on projects very similar to this. And so we're very excited to have them on board for this. Um, and, uh, but he's going to give you, um, a, a brief overview of, of kind of, um, his work and, and terminology and things that, so we can kind of all get on the same page. But, uh, the, the real work will begin after this meeting. Um, and so, um, I'm excited to have him come here and speak to you. I think this is a great forum for that. And so with that, I will hand it off to Jared.
Thank you very much, and it's always exciting and, uh, to kick off a project. And a real honor to have a chance to work in Greater Madison, which is a, a place I've visited several times and have always really admired. So, um, I'm going to share my screen briefly and, um, I have a bit of a PowerPoint. I'm planning to just, um, walk through it. And, um, I just want to confirm you're seeing my PowerPoint now. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Um, planning to just walk through this with you and, um, it'll take about 20 minutes or so. And then it'd be exciting part. I'll really look forward to taking your question. So, um, just a bit about who we are. Um, I've been doing network redesign as a consultant for 25 years. Our firm has been around for eight years. And we're really, what we're really about is fostering clear conversations about transit, leading to confident decisions. And one of the things you should hear in that is I'm, I aspire not to make recommendations. I aspire to give you the information you need to make clear decisions for yourselves because it's your job and not mine to decide what is best for your community and what expresses your community's values. Um, we've done this in a lot of places, um, uh, both, uh, in the US and overseas. We have a long track record of successful redesigns at various scales. Um, but the important idea is that you're the experts on your communities and their goals. We're the people who have done this particular project over and over and over again in many different cities. So our task together is really to fuse those two kinds of expertise. Um, repeatedly, I will, um, and the key to that is we will now and then need to ask you for clear direction about how you want us to proceed. And we'll tend to come to you with a very clear question, very precise question, based on what has arisen out of the work. So, um, and I'll give you an example of that today. Our team, uh, I want to introduce, uh, Daniel Constantino. Wave your hand, Daniel. There's Daniel. Uh, he is our day-to-day project manager. You'll be seeing more of him than of me, but you'll see me, um, a few times. And, um, uh, Chris Yuan, who's our, uh, senior analyst, is also, um, with us, I think. Um, and, um, and several other people. I also want to introduce the team from Urban Assets, well-respected local firm that will be handling our public involvement. And I know you're already familiar with them, Melissa Huggins and Marcus Pearson. I want to start with this whole idea of, of, I, I want to start by groping toward a notion of what we might want when we talk about public transit. Because we have a noisy conversation out there in which people want lots of different things and talk about lots of different things. And I work a lot on trying to figure out what is the thing that's inside of all of those things. What is the thing, what are the things that people really do most want and that connect most deeply to, um, other things that I know you care about as civic leaders? And so I want to introduce the idea of the wall around your life or what we in the transportation business call access or accessibility. Here's a person. She's in a city full of possible destinations. All kinds of things that would give value to her life. Um, jobs, places she could go to school, places she could shop, all places she could socialize, places she could worship, all kinds of things. That's what a city is. It's the availability of lots of those things. But she's limited by where she can get to in a certain amount of time. So 45 minutes, which is a typical travel time budget for a trip you're going to make every day, like a commute or a trip to school, um, there's a limit to how far that takes her. And that defines a certain area around her. And what we call her access is the number of jobs or other useful destinations in that area. And this is something that we can quantify. Um, you, because you, and you can also look, of course, at access to education, access to shopping, those sorts of things, and you'll be seeing those kinds of maps from us as we go through this. Um, because the point is that, that we have a wall around our lives, which is defined by the limits of a reasonable travel time. And beyond that wall are places you can't go, things you can't do, people you won't meet. And so when we, when we plan transit with an eye toward improving access, we are doing a whole bunch of useful things that sit inside a whole bunch of other agendas. First of all, access is the essence of how network design affects ridership. Now, as you should certainly know this year, ridership goes up and down for a lot of external reasons that have nothing to do with network design. But when we do redesign networks, access is a pretty good descrip- is, is the thing that pretty well captures the way network design affects ridership, the things that network is, uh, designed can do that affect ridership. When we make, when the transit network maximizes access, we are increasing the likelihood that the service is useful for any particular trip. And that's really the key to why you get higher ridership out of higher access. You simply increase the number of people for whom transit is even a conceivable option. But when we're maximizing access, we're also doing a whole bunch of cool things. Um, access to economic opportunity is a critical civil rights and social rights issue. And, um, and that is something that we are measuring very directly. Um, more broadly, I, I will sometimes refer to access as, as the physical dimension of freedom because really freedom is the abundance of choices in our lives. And that's exactly what access is measuring in the spatial dimension. Um, the value of investments in a walkable community lie to a large degree in where you can get to from any particular point you're trying to develop. Uh, and that's exactly what we're talking about. And the whole functionality of your city, um, at its core, the whole point of a city is for people to be close to a lot of other things they could do, a lot of people they could meet, a lot of ways they could interact with other people. And the actual functionality of the city is therefore exactly what we're measuring when we measure access. We're measuring pe- whether people can actually get to the city because if you can't get to the city, you might as well live in a country town. Here's what it looks like when we visualize it. This is an example from Norfolk, Virginia. And what you'll find us doing is dropping a pointer in various places all over the city and showing where somebody could get to in a reasonable amount of time. These concentric blobs are 30, 45, and 60 minutes. The outermost is the 60-minute blob. Um, and that's an initial measure of access. And I can show you right down here exactly how many jobs are reachable in that time. This is really useful when I'm talking to someone who is intensely interested in a particular place because I can go to any place and show them exactly what this means for them. But then I can also aggregate it across the city. So now here, each zone is shaded by the number of jobs you can get to from there, by the quote, by the extent of access from there. And of course, you know, you see best improvements down, best, um, uh, best outcomes in places that are just close to a lot of jobs like downtown. But this also helps you to see how the net, transit network is operating to increase people's access to opportunity. And it lets us say something like, "The average Norfolk resident can reach 30,000 jobs in 45 minutes", which is a fairly useful sort of headline description of what we're often doing. And that then raises the question, can and should we make that better? Um, if we come up with a network plan, one of the key things we'll be able to say, it will be able to say is how this partic- particular statistic changes, how we have expanded access to opportunity in the city, which by the way, is also the way to expand ridership and to do other good things. And we'll be able to show that not just citywide, but for any particular location and also for any particular subpopulation of concern. Like if you want to talk just, uh, about lower income people, just about people of color or whatever. So how does transit expand access? What are we doing in a network designed for expand access? Generally speaking, your most efficient access-expanding network is frequent and reasonably fast and reliable and available when you need it. The last of those is span of service, whether it's running at all at the time that you need it. But be, but frequency is credit, is central to how transit succeeds because so much of travel time is waiting time. When you see these diagrams, I want to emphasize, this, this is the travel time counting, walk plus wait plus ride, all three parts of a typical transit trip. So low frequency counts as a long wait, which counts as part of travel time, which is why frequency is so fundamental. Frequently, it, it very often is the primary thing that is wrong with the transit service that makes it not actually useful, not actually liberating. However, frequency is expensive. And as a result, when you're working with a limited budget, you can't run, run the same amount of frequency everywhere. To maximize, and so here's where it starts to get difficult, to maximize access across an entire city, you're going to have to maximize access in the places where there are many people and benefit, where there are many people and activities that will benefit from access at that location. So let's talk about this a little more. Um, frequency is the most neglected element in talking about transit. Uh, I tend, I have found over many years that all of my stakeholders, everyone I'm working with in a city understands the concept of speed and reliability because as motorists, they understand the concept of vehicle speed and congestion. But there isn't a mo- a motorist doesn't have an equivalent of frequency. Um, that, that reality that you, that, and you can't go at all until something happens. Um, so frequency is a cubed benefit. It means you go when you want to go. It means you make connections easily to get to more places. Frequency is really the thing that most effectively combines many routes into a single network that enable you to go where, wherever you want to go and less risk of being stranded by a disruption. Because those three benefits of frequency are mathematically independent, um, they add up to essentially a cubed benefit where you see a nonlinear payoff to frequency. And that's certainly what we see. Every time our firm does a transit study, um, we take route-by-route data from all these transit agencies and continue dumping them into a database. And we get this sort of pattern when you see frequency, um, along your X-axis here, highest frequencies toward the left, and productivity, boardings per revenue hour on the Y-axis. And you see this distinct upward curve where the highest frequencies produce the highest number of boardings per quantity of service, boardings per revenue hour. That's remarkable because when you double a frequency, you are immediately cutting productivity in half because doubling frequency doubles the bottom of that ratio. You've doubled the quantity of service. Um, so, um, so frequency is really powerful. But, um, you have, but to get the best average access and to aim for the highest possible ridership, if that is what you want, and I am not going to tell you it is what you should want. I'm going, this is now an extended if statement. If this is an outcome you care about, then you have to focus the best service where the highest possible number of people can benefit from it. And that presents us with some fairly straightforward and politically difficult geometry. Because when you propose a service change that affects a particular neighborhood, people in that neighborhood will often assume that you're reacting in some way to who they are or expressing an opinion about them. And in fact, what transit, uh, um, your transit service is not about who you are, but it is unavoidably about where you are. This is a geographic thing and it has some geometric facts. And so the geometry of how a community is laid out just makes an enormous difference on how much in, in, how much access transit can provide. So the first of these key factors is density. Here are two towns. Here are two bus routes with the same number of buses on them. They cost the same to operate. But the one on the top, the one with twice as many, uh, homes around, uh, uh, in a given area, simply has twice as many people within walking distance of every stop. So of course, the market is twice as large. Even before you think about the likelihood of people using transit, there are just more people near a fixed stop. That means more ridership. It means that an investment in expanding access from that point benefits more people, which is how you see the payoff in something like average access citywide. Walkability. Is it possible to walk between the stop and the activities around it? In a historic street grid, um, you will find, if this is a bus stop and this is a quarter-mile radius, the black streets are where you could actually walk to in a quarter mile. And as you can see, when you have a traditional neighborhood grid, you can walk to most of the area. On the other hand, if you have a highly shredded street network, particularly where you have large barriers such as freeways or railroad, or, or freight railroad tracks that obstruct the pedestrian or just cul-de-sac street patterns, you can wall off large parts of this area and make them not actually available. And that, if, that of course, is exactly as if the density were lower. You've made the market smaller. An investment in access to that point will produce less benefit citywide because there are fewer people to benefit from it because many have just been walled off by the street path. It must also be safe to cross the street at the stop. If you can't cross the street, cross the street at a bus stop, you have one-way service because a transit service will almost always take you from one side of the street and return you back to the other side. These are fundamentals and where these are not present, we, we can deliver less access with an investment. And that makes, and if access and ridership are the goal, it becomes harder to justify more service there. Linearity. This is a huge issue in some of the neighborhoods that your community has, especially out along the freeways. Can transit run in reasonably straight lines? These two abstract cities, um, have the same four, are made up of the same four places, the same four land uses. But in the upper image, those land uses are all more or less in a straight line, which means that a line, uh, a single relatively short line is, is going to be a direct service between any two of them. Once everything is set back from the street, once you have Walmart behind a quarter mile of parking, once you have the college or business park on a cul-de-sac by the freeway, um, once you have the college on the hill, um, and, and particularly unfortunately, once you have low-income housing on particularly high-density, low-income housing that has been placed in these cul-de-sac positions where it is not on the way to anywhere else. You have a, a fundamental, a fundamentally worse market for transit. You have a market where transit will have to drive further to serve the same people and where, as a result, the line will be longer, which means you can't afford it to be as frequent, which means it's not as useful. And also the line is slower, so it's less attractive in terms of travel time. It's a lose, lose, lose situation. And so one of the most difficult challenges we will have in this study is to talk about the places that are built like this lower drawing and what it, what, what we can reasonably do in those places, um, given that the layout prevents transit from being operated efficiently and, uh, in a way that's going to, going to provide a good experience for people as they arrive. Proximity, finally, does transit have to cross, traverse long gaps? Um, operating cost, you know, time is money in transit. If you have to drive further, it's going to cost more and that's going to become a less effective market. Transit tends to really sing, excuse me, sort of in the range of about a, a two-mile to six or seven-mile trip. Shorter than about two miles. Most trips are cycling trips. So what's transit trying to do? I just laid out what you would do if you wanted ridership and if you wanted, you wanted to maximize access for people across the entire city. But I'm not assuming that is what you want to do and it involves a very difficult trade-off. So here's a simple fictional town. The dots represent people and jobs and activities. So dots together means higher density. And in this simple town, most of the dense, most of the population, 70% of the population lives along just two streets at high density. And the whole rest of the area, there's a scattering of population at very low density. And I've got 18 buses here. So what would I do? How would I deploy those buses to create a transit network? Well, it depends on what the goal is and that's going to be up to you. If the goal were ridership, we would deliver that by providing maximum access for the greatest possible number of people, which is not the same as providing access to everyone. The access-maximizing answer is to deliver lots of frequency in the places where there are lots of people. And, and the, and as a result, we end up with just the two bus lines on the two major streets, but the lots of buses on them, the bus coming very frequently. That is, that, uh, an access analysis would show that the best maximum access, uh, across the whole population is to provide really good ser- service to that 60, 70% of the population that is located in places where transit can provide lots of access efficiently. Again, dense, walkable, linear. Um, but it's not available for everyone. Mrs. Jones, who lives in the southeast corner of the city, does not have service. She's not happy about that. She'll come and yell at you about that and she has every right to. It's also then not necessarily going to be there for people who need it most, who may be anywhere in the city, not just in the places that it's easy for transit to get to. That's particularly an issue, for example, where you have low, low, um, low-income housing located out by the freeways on frontage roads in places where, um, the geometry is very difficult for transit. So that's what I would do if the goal were ridership. Um, but if, if on the other hand, the goal were to take care of Mrs. Jones, if the goal were to make sure that there's a little bit of service everywhere, I can do that too. Now I have 10 routes instead of two. And because of that, I've divided my 18 buses over far more route mileage. And as a result, whereas these buses come every eight minutes, these buses come once an hour. There is service everywhere, but be, but spreading the service out, that means spreading it thin. And that means that these buses are not going to come very often. They're not going to come where you need them. As a result, they're not going to be very useful for anyone who has any options at all. And as a result, ridership will be much lower than it would be here. And, um, average access across the whole city will also be lower because we're not focusing the good service where there are the most people, which is how you deliver the best acts, average access for the whole city. So neither of these goals is right or wrong. They're also not either or. Almost, um, every city I've ever worked with wants to come down somewhere in between them. But the question will be exactly where you want to, where in between them you want to come down. The, um, the ridership goal delivers you maximum average access to opportunity, maximum average, uh, average across the population. Um, it delivers you the lowest subsidy per passenger by virtue of delivering the highest ridership. It supports dense and walkable development because that's where it, for its own reasons, tends to want to go. Um, all environmental, environmental benefits of public transit arise from public transit being ridden, not just from public transit existing. So if you want benefits like admissions reduction, reduction in vehicle miles traveled, that's only going to come from planning the network for ridership. However, there are also excellent reasons, um, for the coverage goal. There's, coverage goal means there's some service to near every, near every home and job. There's a baseline level of access available everywhere. It's not very good, but everyone has some. This is very important when you're starting to think in terms of lifeline needs. Um, ridership is not about needs. Ridership is about demand. When you start talking about needs, when someone comes before you and tells you that they need this service, without there necessarily being very many of them, you're being asked to pursue a coverage goal. That's the real, that's fundamental. And finally, coverage goals often arise from the desire to serve, um, to serve every alderman, to serve every city or electoral district, to spread things out as a, as, um, across the city for that reason. And also you'll often hear, "We pay taxes too. We pay taxes for this service. Why don't we get any?" Excellent reasons for both ridership service and coverage service. Hang on. This trade-off is unavoidable. Um, but you can choose a deliberate balance, a deliberate balance point on the spectrum between these goals. And that sounds something like devote this percentage of our resources to the ridership goal and this percentage of our resources to the coverage goal. And I am going to ask you in this study to think about it that way because the trade-off is so unavoidable. So here's what this looks like in a real place. This is Eugene, Oregon. Daniel, Daniel knows all about this. This was his project. Um, Eugene, Oregon's a college town, site of the University of Oregon. Um, and we did a similar kind of process. We showed them what a higher ridership network might look like and what a higher coverage network might look like. And here it's important to remember that on every map we will ever draw for you, red means high frequency. Red means the bus is always coming soon. And blue and pale blue mean lower frequencies. Generally, we will say a red line means a bus every 15 minutes or better all day. The dark blue means 30 and the pale blue means 60 or worse. So you can see very clearly what this looks like in practice. A high ridership network is fewer, more frequent lines with no service to someplace. A higher coverage network is lines everywhere, but correspondingly lower frequency, just as I showed you in that abstract diagram. But now we can do this calculation. We can, we can, we can analyze- We can, we can, we can analyze these networks and say, over here, 90% of this service is where it would be if the only goal were ridership. That's the key question I'll ask. 90% of the service is where it would be if the only goal were ridership. 10% isn't. In the existing system, we can, we can review the existing system. And in Eugene, we said 65% ridership. 65% of the existing service was where it would be if the goal were ridership. So starting from this existing system, we developed a higher coverage concept which moved the dial this way. And we developed a higher ridership concept which moved the dial to the left toward higher ridership. The point of this was to put out in public two basic concepts for the network. Neither one of these is going to be implemented. The idea was simply to show people the contrast in their own geography so that they could think about how it affected their own community. And then to ask them this very question, which is, how would you divide a transit agency's budget between the kinds of things that achieve highest ridership, which is frequency, where there's the most people, and the kinds of things that achieve higher coverage, which is lower frequency but going everywhere? And we ask in those percentage terms to try to see where people want to be on that spectrum. So that's the general approach that we take. And of course, we're at the beginning of the project. We're going to have lots of conversations about how we modify and refine this approach to be the right thing for Madison in the context of your particular conversation. But just to be clear on how this works as a conversation. The flow of this project is a conversation between technical work and community discussion. The technical work, and it proceeds basically in three waves, three cycles. So first of all, we'll do an analysis of service and demand and needs. We'll describe the existing situation and we'll put that together into something called a choices report. And we call that a choices report because it lays out, rather as I just did, the argument for why you need to think about certain choices and why you need to answer certain questions when you think about your values. And it will provide that analysis, not just in the abstract geometric way that I just did, but also by way of careful analysis of your own network and examples from your own network. And we give that report over to the community. And the question to the community is, okay, what should our priorities be? We ask them to think first about that in the abstract before we show them any maps or any proposed networks. Then we come back and, okay, based on that, we sketch some contrasting alternatives to illustrate trade-offs, like the ones I just showed you from Eugene. That produces a document called an alternatives report. This lays out those two alternatives, and it also lays out a whole bunch of consequences of them. So that access analysis that I showed you about, how many more jobs people can get to in 45 minutes and also where that benefit mostly is in the city, how that benefit looks when you sort it by income or when you sort it by race, all that will be in there. And based on that, we'll go back to the community and say, okay, now here are two actual maps of directions the system could go. Which alternative is closer to what you want? We don't expect you to like either of them. We're just trying to get a sense of where you would come down on the spectrum between them. That direction, and at that point, that public conversation comes back to you. And at the end of that public outreach, we need you to tell us what, where you want to be on that spectrum. And then we'll go and draw a draft plan that matches what you've told us. The reason for this process is that I never want the draft plan to be a surprise when by the time we're ready to put out a draft plan, the community will be familiar with it. The community will know that they have thought about it already and expressed a view about it already. And they'll see the result of that previous conversation in the network that we present. That's very important. And then finally, of course, the final question, do we have the network right? The usual kind of review at the end of a project when you actually have a draft plan. That turns into the recommended plan, which gives your staff the tools and you the tools to move forward with implementation. Daniel, do you want to say a word about the timeline?
Sure. So as Jared was just saying, there's basically, you can basically look at this project as proceeding in three phases. There's a first phase when we are getting familiar with the network, presenting the key issues, and then asking in the abstract what the priorities should be. And we expect that phase to essentially take us through maybe, through the fall and through the first couple of months of 2021. And coming out of that, we'll have some community input on the priorities. And at that point, we may be coming back to you and saying, here's what we've heard from the community. What's the direction you'd like to give us in designing some alternatives? Then we get into phase two, where we are designing and evaluating the alternatives in collaboration with Metro Transit staff. That will take a couple of months as well. There are three or potentially four alternatives that were scoped for at this time. And so we will build that. And having built that, we will then present that in a report and in various public-facing condensed versions of the report to the public and ask, as Jared was saying, which, what's closer to what, to what you want and what you're interested in and why? Having gotten that input, we can then come back to you all, say, okay, here's what we've heard. Where, where in between these alternatives do you think the draft plan should situate itself? And then we go and design the draft plan, present that to the public. And we expect that we would be getting to that draft plan probably in the early part of the fall of next year. We'd spend, again, a little bit of time having that being evaluated by the public and getting some more direction from you and turn that into a final plan towards the end of 2021. And so getting you a plan that is then ready for your agency and for Metro Transit staff to take the next steps, which are to actually do the work in the schedules and on the streets that turn your network into what it's going to become.
So thanks very much, Daniel. And with that, I will throw it open to questions and discussion.
All right, thank you. Did we have any registrations for public comment for this item?
No, we don't.
Okay. Questions for either of our speakers? Please use the hand raise feature. Harold Climes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for this presentation. Can you say a little bit more about how the public outreach and public input process for this works? Like, especially given the current circumstances, where I believe in the past, you have usually done this in person, which obviously is not an option right now. Thank you.
Do you want to take this one, Daniel?
I can start.
Oh, no, I'll do it. The core idea here is that we want people to engage in whatever way works best for them to engage. It is already true, it has been true for a while, that for many people, the best way to engage is not in person. The best, many people are too busy to come to meetings. And we, and it's very important to reach out to a broader community than will ever come to meetings. So while it's important to have meetings, it's also very important to have web-based outreach and other forms of going-to-people outreach that reach them where you are, where they are. So most of our outreach processes, whatever meetings we're having, and, you know, there's an extensive proposal, and Daniel talked more about it, will be trying to drive, get answers to the same questions, either on a paper survey or on a web survey, trying as much as possible to drive traffic to a web survey where we gather those questions more efficiently. I also want to emphasize, we do, we do, we will do also some intensive workshops with some invited stakeholders who are, who are particularly in a position to guide public opinion and which will give them an opportunity. That, the largest of those happens at the choices report or alternatives report stage. That will give people enough, some opinion leaders an opportunity to really sink this, their teeth into this in detail and really come to understand it from the inside.
Yeah. So to get a little bit slightly, slightly more nuts and bolts-y on it, I think there's, at the very beginning of this project, we're going to be working along with urban assets to really identify these sort of key stakeholders, opinion leaders, people who will end up expressing an influential opinion about this one way or another, to identify them, contact them, and engage them on the project and on the types of choices and trade-offs we're going to be looking on. And we're, and this is also the way to potentially get us in the rooms with the groups or the virtual rooms, as it were, with the groups that they, that they lead, that they manage, that they know. All of that, as Jared was saying, with the goal of getting a lot of feedback on a web survey. And so we've been doing these web surveys for a long time. And I will say that even in pre-pandemic conditions, you know, you could hold multiple public meetings and get fewer than 80 people on this kind of thing and yet have 1,500 or 2,500 responses on a web survey. So we've, we've always seen orders of magnitude more engagement, of engagement online compared to in-person. And so the real question, and it's been following us kind of since before the pandemic, but that we need to continue working on and that there's perhaps more of an opportunity to work on now, is how you expand that online engagement to a broader set of communities so that we are, you know, more and more talking to audiences beyond people who tend to be, to be frank, white over 50 and making over $70,000 a year, right? And those audiences are out there and they're interested. And I think we want to find the ways to get the, to get to them and get their input as well as everyone else's, you know, in large numbers.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Eric Sunquist, you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Jared and Dan. Really excited that this is happening. Two questions, one on each of your approaches, the access and the coverage. On access, how do you handle variables like wait time versus in-vehicle time or walking time versus transfer time? Different kinds of vehicles, you know, is it you account for people who might like riding in a nice shiny BRT compared to a regular old bus? That kind of thing. And of course, the salience of this as well. It's in the general calculation. But for us, when we're hopefully having a BRT, which, you know, could involve a lot more transfers that we have right now. We also have transfer points that, you know, would be calculated differently depending on how you do that. So could you just speak to those, those issues? And you're muted.
Sure. People are going to come at you with 1,001 personal preferences. They're going to come at you with, with, with stories about why they can't walk or why they don't want to transfer or why they don't like this bus or that bus. And there's always going to be all of that. The way, the way we gain altitude on that is to say, what is the overwhelming reason that people who could find transit useful don't use it? And the answer is because it isn't useful. And that's really what we're trying to capture with access. So recognizing that, you know, some person, particular person may have strong feelings about walking as opposed to waiting. Overall and in general, most people are going to respond to the total travel time rather than to the pieces, the different pieces it's made of, right? So the travel time is always walk plus wait plus ride. It's always the sum of all three of those. And what we find people actually doing is optimizing for the total of those things. So for example, if you live on an hourly bus route, but there is a bus every 15 minutes that's a quarter mile away from you. And you look at your trip planner for how to go downtown. If the hourly bus isn't coming soon, and it probably isn't, then the trip planner will tell you to walk a quarter mile over to that other bus route and use that bus instead. Because the trip planner assumes, unless you tell it otherwise, that you just want to get there. And that, and that more important than any of these other preferences is that you want to be able to go lots of places and do lots of things in a reasonable amount of time. That's what we see in, at the most fundamental level of what, of what generates ridership. And so we will be tending, we will be listening for that. And obviously, there will be communities of concern like disabled people who have particularly issues with personal mobility and what we call the walk phase. But in the large scale and for most people, and we're also going to be attentive, for example, to where walking is unsafe. But in the large scale and for most people, we find that if we optimize the total trip time, optimize walk plus wait plus ride, counting transfers and everything else, we get it, we get closest to the essence of what's actually useful to most people. And I really think that the primary reason people don't ride transit is because they, because transit is objectively and measurably not useful for them. And that's what we're really trying to get at.
Okay, thank you. And so it's clear how you optimize for, for access, at least to me. How do you optimize for coverage? Is it like the, by the max, you know, the maximum number of houses you can, a bus passes by? And is there any kind of bounding of that by how effective it is? I mean, what, what are the kind of guardrails around how you think about coverage?
A typical coverage calculation does presume a minimal level of service. So it will say something like, coverage by service that comes at least an hour, at least every hour for 10 hours a day or something like that. It has to have some sort of, there has to be some reason why you can't satisfy it by covering the whole city with a bus per week. So, you know, that's more or less what that is. And then it's a standard that says basically, percentage of the population that's within a certain distance, quarter mile or half mile of that service. Many agencies already have these kinds of standards and, and already monitor them. But we will, and we will monitor them. What will show, what it will show very clearly is that the coverage alternative gets very high coverage and the ridership alternative gets very high access.
But it's based on home locations.
Well, we can, we can talk about coverage to jobs too. Now, we can calculate coverage to jobs as well. And the, we could, we would like to be able to talk about, you know, retail and all kinds of other things. Homes and jobs are the things we have really precise data about. So that tends to be what we focus on.
There is an extent to which what we are optimizing for in a coverage scenario could depend on the direction you give us. So we can optimize for getting the most homes possible within a quarter mile of a bus every 60 minutes, for example. But, you know, we could also optimize for getting the most people possible within 45 minutes of 20,000 jobs. And that will result in a coverage situation because, you know, if you were optimizing for access overall, you would have maybe the top 50% of people with access to 100,000 jobs. And that's, right? So you can, you can look at it various ways. You can even look at it by there has to be a bus route in every single alderman's district, right? So to some extent, that's, that's for, that's for you to tell us what the ultimate criteria is.
We'll also ask a question, a follow-up question about coverage. We'll ask you this, we'll ask the public this, and in the end, we'll ask you this, which is, to the extent that we have services designed for a goal of coverage, what's the priority for that? And typical responses can include, spread it all out evenly so that, you know, there's, there's one in every district or whatever, so that everyone who pays taxes to has a bus number. Another possible answer is concentrate it according to critical social and racial justice perspectives. So you can also choose to concentrate coverage service in those places where people are most likely to be experiencing severe exclusion for, due to some combination of economic condition and historic structural racism. And that can be a basis then for saying, okay, we have this coverage budget. But of that coverage budget, you can tell us, a lot of it really has to go according to that rather than just being spread out equally. Because you do have those situations, the low-income housing scattered along a freeway, frontage road, where a ridership route isn't going to go there. It's just too geometrically hostile. You probably will want a coverage route if, if, if there's going to be anything going there. And that's how you would more or less define that.
Last question, will the scenarios that you generate come with outcome forecasts like ridership VMT reduction? I don't know, economic benefit? Can you speak about like what kind of things we're going to get that help us decide?
I would, I do my best to steer you away from relying on ridership predictions for reasons that have been obvious in the last year. Ridership goes up and down for all kinds of external reasons that have nothing to do with network design. And so whereas, I'll, what, what we will do is be telling you a lot about how access changes, a lot about how people's ability to go places changes. We're quantifying how we're making the service more useful. We're quantifying how we're making the service more useful. And that will tend to, that will tend to correlate with higher ridership, which correlates to those various environmental outcomes you're talking about. Let me tell you a quick story about this. When I was working on the giant redesign in Houston, where there was a point where in a board meeting where a board member said, now come on, you've got, you've got to have some professional guess about what ridership is. And I said, okay, plus 20% after two years of operation, net of all other changes, net of everything else that may happen. And that's all you could expect from me as a consultant. I'm not, I'm, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's going to happen in the next two years. So that's all I could say. And yet, of course, I really hadn't said anything because two years later, all kinds of stuff has happened. And therefore there's no basis for verifying my predictions as having been wrong or right. So that's kind of why I, our approach is to be, is to talk less about predicting the future, which is really obviously unpredictable, and talk more about how the network is creating the, is creating the necessary conditions in network design for you to get all those other outcomes by virtue of simply making transit more useful in a measurable way.
And so we'll show, we'll show access and we'll also show various measures of coverage typically.
And then other, other people who want to can go where they want to with those numbers and, you know, run them through whatever analyses they want to, to get ridership predictions that they believe and calculations of those, you know, VMT and emissions outcomes and so on, if they want to.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric. Baltasar, Dana Santana, go ahead.
I thank, thank you very much. You know, I get very excited when I hear words, you know, words such as job, you know, not just connecting the big companies, but also the retail companies, the, the small businesses to, to, to jobs, which is such a need here in Madison. You know, you talk about racial inequities, about lower income communities. So I, I really, you know, get, get very excited when we combine transportation with those concepts, which, you know, are very, very important and dear, dear, dear to the work that we do. And Harold, thanks, thanks for bringing this up because I was going to ask this question about community outreach. And you already mentioned that Madison, Dane County, having the Latinx community being the largest minority here in Dane County, Madison, are you, how are you going to be doing, how are you going to be reaching out to folks whose English is not their first language? And, you know, we're talking about the Moe community, the, the Latinx community. Do you have any plans to do that? You know, obviously, you know, I, and, and especially also some, you, you mentioned about online surveys. You know, there is also that digital disparity and gap with, with many of that. And at the end of the day, the majority of the folks who respond to those surveys are folks who do not look like me. So, you know, is there anything that you are, my plan on doing? But I think this is.
We've done a lot of projects where we've had to do some particular intensive and specialized outreach to make sure that the responses do look like the population and, and do look like people. Daniel, do you want to say a little more about this?
Yeah, I mean, the intention is very much to be reaching out to various, to, to community groups of all sorts and, and to make specific efforts in non-white communities and in non-English speaking communities. So the thing is, you know, we are obviously not locally based. And so we are not highly familiar with how the various communities are organized in Madison. That's why we're working with the local involvement firm, with Urban Assets. And so we'll be working with them to figure out who needs to be reached, who is, who, who can we talk to that can then spread the message as much as possible and, and help people to come and give the input that they would like to give. And so, you know, our experience in a lot of communities is that, you know, ultimately with online outreach, just as with so many other things online, if you look at the totality of responses you get, you're going to get a sample that is biased. Right? It's biased towards higher incomes, it's biased towards white people, et cetera. But what we really try hard to do is to do a lot of active outreach so that we can get to statistically significant numbers of people who don't fit in, who are, who are not in these, in the, in the average, in that biased average. Right? And so once we have that, then we can look at this, look at results and say, well, this is what we heard in aggregate, but this is what we heard from people who make less than $40,000 a year. This is what we heard from people who live in, you know, certain categories of zip codes. This is what we heard from people who, you know, speak Spanish at home. Right? We can get, we, we can get to those with those active and early engagement efforts. And it's, you know, it's a little bit hard to predict the results of that before we get to it, but it's certainly the intent to do that and do that fairly intensively.
All right, Baltasar, did that take care of your question?
Yeah, I think just one, one recommendation is to, 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 to make sure is that, you know, we, we know Urban Assets and we, they've been working as part of the community. But I think, you know, they will be working, you know, to, to, to push that as much as possible just because historically, we, communities of, of color have been forgotten through, through this communication, through, through this conversation. So, you know, they thank you. But again, I was very glad to hear some of those words that are very, very key to some of the work that is happening here in Madison. Thank you.
I, I want to emphasize that, you know, if you or anyone else here has specific recommendations about groups and people that we should reach out to to help broaden our base of input, that, you know, we're interested. And please let us know. We, we, we want to get the broadest possible base of input.
All right, thank you. Bridget Brown, you're up next.
Yeah, so I just had a question about the determinations that are made sort of ultimately by the client with the, the balance of coverage versus the frequency goals. I wanted to hear a little bit about how those final decisions are generally made by other clients that you've had. And for example, do you, does your firm offer thoughts on, you know, weighting of criteria for each of the goals? Or, you know, will you make recommendations about how we should or could make those determinations and potentially provide some options?
Yeah. First of all, our job is to make the choices clear. But I don't live in Madison and, and we don't live in Madison and we will be extremely careful, much more careful probably than any, than most consultants about not imposing our values on you. Right? There's a whole bunch of ways that I would approach this decision as a citizen, as a citizen of Portland where I live, where, and all kinds of sorts of ways I talk about it here as a citizen that I'll be careful not to do in Madison. And my job is really to open up the widest possible space for you to feel like you can make your own decision. So the key to that is really for me to convince you that you have to answer a quest, a particular question that I ask you. Because the answer is, it's only if you answer that question in that particular way that the answer is going to have an effect. Right? So we evolved this approach to some extent because we'd all been in lots of very well-intentioned visioning meetings where people were asked to, you know, come up with a sentence that describes their vision of whatever and you'd walk around and on the flip charts would be sustainability, equity, justice, prosperity. And it simply doesn't answer anyone's actual question about what to do in any actual situation. You know? And so our approach is more like if you hire someone to fix your plumbing and he goes under your sink and he works a little bit and he comes out and says, look, I could do it sort of cheap and fast and it would last a year. Or I could rip it out and make it just like new and that would cost a lot more, but it would last you a lot longer. That's an example of a trade-off question that a technician asks to you, the customer. And you have to answer it. And it's a question about your values and priorities, but he gets to frame the question. Because only if, only if you answer the question that he asked, can you actually, will your answer actually deliver, yeah, affect reality? Can he actually act on your direction? So that's really the key to it. And as we get into it, you will probably find that the question's really difficult and you'll want lots of advice. And I will encourage you as much as possible to talk with each other about it, to talk with your community about it. If you want, I can provide you with examples of what some other cities have decided. And above all, you will have the Alternatives Report, which will say very clearly, if you go this far in this direction, here are the outcomes. And if you go this far in this direction, here are the outcomes. And so, so you'll have the information you need to sort of, you know, find your way together toward what kind of, what, where you want to be on that.
All right, did that take care of your question, Bridget? Okay. Alder Foster, you're up next.
Thank you. Two points. One, just wanted to reinforce what Baltasar was mentioning. And Dana, it was nice to hear you say that, you know, we've got options on that front and you're certainly interested in hearing from, from us about which groups to, to make sure and do outreach with, et cetera. So I would just, I, I think this topic of representation, broad community engagement, particularly for communities that are historically bound to represented in, in these decision-making processes is a pretty big theme and something that's pretty important for our community. So I, I would recommend that, you know, kind of early on in the process that we, we do have some kind of explicit conversations about that and especially with Urban Assets, that they're kind of drawing up the public engagement component of this work. So just wanted to reinforce, I think, the importance of that for, for probably a lot of people that are on this, this call today. So I think taking that kind of head on and, and early would be a good, good thing to do. And then second, related to Eric's earlier questions, particularly around VMT. So that was, I think, it was kind of our top priority goal as we prepared for this and then put the RFP out was that we really want a system that will maximize VMT reduction. And so I know that in the two models, in the sort of ridership side, I think one of the sub-points or one of the consequences of a, you know, high ridership model is VMT reduction. But just wanted to, I guess, ask if you have any input now. But, you know, there's, maybe it's a little bit nuanced, but, you know, maximizing ridership isn't perhaps necessarily the same as maximizing the VMT reduction. And just curious if, I know you said, Jared, that it's sort of difficult to predict either ridership or VMT reduction or anything like that. But will that be part of the, what you're presenting? Is there any nuance around particular ridership patterns or, or coverage that would, that we would expect would reduce VMT more than others? You mentioned earlier, you know, short trips, less than two miles or maybe, you know, cycling trips. Like, did that get factored in? Do you say here's, here's maximizing access and taking out the, the short trip access? Or can you speak to that at all?
Sure. We are, and, and, you know, we're keen to talk more about this as we go through this study. The only resistance you're finding in me is, is when you ask me for predictions of things that I don't think are predictable. But I think we can talk more about ways that transit ridership affects VMT. The short trip is a good example. You know, we are finding in some inner cities that transit is losing ridership to cycling. Well, from a VMT perspective, that's fine. Right? There, and so we may want to have more of a conversation about, you know, is it okay for you all to lose ridership to cycling? Because if so, then we should be tending to give a lot less weight to trips that, you know, look like they could mostly be cycling trips. Another interesting one is the so-called, is people who don't have cars. There, and this is particularly striking in the Latinx community, where we see it a lot. People give each other rides a lot. People rely on their family and friends to give them rides in the absence of functional transit. And I am constantly reminding people, that's VMT too. And because there's a very common mistake that people made of assuming that reduced, that, that what the way transit competes with the car is by competing for the driver of the car. And that's not necessarily true. And we can dig it down to that in a little bit, a little bit more in surveys. Because one of the things we usually have to do is raise awareness about how much low-income people create VMT, even if it's by virtue of being chauffeured around rather than driving. So.
Great, thank you.
Margaret Bergamini, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for this presentation. It's been very informative. This is perhaps more of a comment, trying to phrase it as a question. And I'm not sure that you're the appropriate folks to direct it to. I think it's more of a Urban Assets question and also a question for those of us who serve on boards that encompass more than just the city of Madison. But as you're aware, this system is a, an agency of the city of Madison, but a number of surrounding communities purchase services from the city of Madison. And some have had longer relationships with the city of Madison on this than others. There are other folks who are possibly, other entities that are possibly within the ridership area that we would like to bring into the system. And of course, every government in the country is facing a great deal of uncertainty in terms of their budgets. So my question is, as decision makers, we're talking about this as if this group in the city of Madison is going to be the only decision maker here. But obviously, depending on what type of a system we design, it may be that Pittsburgh decides, no, that's not the service they want to purchase. How are we going to engage with their electeds, with their citizenry and balance those, balance their judgments about coverage and frequency versus the cities? And are you going to be able to offer us any advice to that set of magic questions?
Oh, we will have to. And generally, our approach here is to include those neighboring cities in the basic conversation. Even though at the point, at the decision point, they get to make decisions for themselves. And so I will, you know, we will certainly welcome survey responses from those cities, certainly include those cities in our outreach processes, certainly, you know, be available to talk to those city councils, to those aldermen and so on. And with the goal that when we get to the decision point, we have enough guidance for them about what's likely to work for them, that when we draw a network for Madison, we can draw something indicative. You know, this is, and, and, you know, say on the map, you know, in a big box, details in this city are indicative and must be refined in consultation with the community. But it has to be all one network, and so we have to do that. Tom, Tom's the one.
Yeah, so I just want to add to that. We have, and Justin has, been in contact with the city of Pittsburgh in particular, asking them if they wanted to be involved. The city of Pittsburgh has different entities and some are looking at other transit alternatives and some want to keep this partnership with Metro strong. And so probably the, the best thing that we can do is just keep our communication with Pittsburgh frequent through the study, recognizing that, you know, their desires will be a variable.
Yeah, I, given the timeline of this project, given that it crosses a couple of election cycles, given that it crosses a couple of budget cycles that are going to be very challenging for all entities concerned, I, I think, I asked the question as much to put it into the forefront of everybody's mind that this is something that we are going to need to be attentive to throughout, throughout the process and do as much as we can to assist. and do as much as we can to assist via our own contacts and organizations, as well as the regional bodies, et cetera.
One thing to think about here, I can't say that I know enough about your system yet to say that this is true, but it may be that the service that we're providing to some of these external communities is very tightly linked to service you're providing within the city of Madison because it's on the same routes and it's just an extension, or for various reasons. It may also be that, you know, that's the one route to Pittsburgh, and it doesn't really serve neighborhoods in Madison. And in those second cases, we, if Pittsburgh is paying for that service at a rate that, you know, is fiscally sustainable for Metro Transit and doesn't dig into the service that would otherwise be provided to city of Madison neighborhoods, we can't hold that harmless. That's a decision that could be taken in the course, in the course of the project and let Pittsburgh make its own decision whenever it feels like it about increasing, decreasing, or changing that.
All right, Margaret, did I take care of all of your questions? All right, thank you.
Yes, you did.
All right, Bill Bremer, you're up next.
Thank you. Just a question, a couple of questions about what are some of the givens that you start with that are, that the city has given you or not given you, or alternatives, such as things like existing transfer points and the status of BRT, existing size of fleet, or is that, how does that impact your outcomes? And then also, is the results scalable? So in other words, if BRT can be expanded in, let's say, five years, 10 years, is that, how does that impact the outcome of your, your study? Or is your study, will have that value in five years? Or how long is the study good for? Thank you.
So, yeah, so this is something that perhaps one of the people on the line from Metro will want to refine upon my answer. But my, the big picture for the study, I believe, is that it is in the larger context of, of the BRT project, right? The study exists because in a few years, there's this BRT project that's inevitably going to cause a major shift in the network. And so you're, we're getting ahead of that. You're getting ahead of that by doing this study now. And you can have a network that's essentially ready for BRT when you get to that point. So I think that's really the way that we're looking at it. We're not looking at it as a 10- or 20-year transit, long-term transit expansion plan. We're looking at how do we get you to a network that is going to get you the most out of this new investment that you're making right now in BRT? And it's going to put you in a position where you're ready for it.
The only thing I would add is, is around the, the transfer points. So we would be, we will be looking at the transfer points as to, you know, what, how they work into a new network or don't.
So the study will have an impact at whether the, the transfer points are at optimum and how they could affect the different coverages and ridership.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So things like the transfer points and the fleet and all that, those are all inputs about the system that, you know, as we start work in the next month, we're going to be getting all that information from Metro Transit and looking at it. When we get to alternatives, you know, the, the point of alternatives is to be able to think about potentially some fairly radical things. Well, there may be alternatives that don't include transfer points at all, or alternatives where they're in different locations. I can't tell you that yet, but, you know.
I think I want to add.
Go ahead, Tom.
One caveat that, no, we are pursuing BRT. We have submitted our project for evaluation. But the policymakers, you know, will be placing it in the capital plan. It's the fault. And so this is contingent that policymakers and the alders and the council continue to go the direction that we're going. Just a caveat, though, for one of them.
At the same time, if the BRT project, for one reason or another, doesn't proceed, that doesn't mean that there isn't a good reason to review the bus network and think about how you think it should function in two to five years from now.
Great, thank you.
To follow up, we've placed relatively few boundaries on Jared Walker. You know, we didn't say you have to do a transfer points and non-transfer point alternatives. We did say the general concept of the East-West BRT line is, is a given. For example, there are some details on the North-South line and where it terminates and some other parts of the BRT line, you know, the West Transfer Point, Madison College, Easttown Mall, where the, the decisions made by the route planning study could, could influence or change, change the BRT, the details of the BRT plan, not the overall plan. They have to work within the framework of the general BRT plan. But it could affect some of the details. Otherwise, you know, we, we've basically, we, we see them as, as the experts. And so we'll let them sort of, it looks like they're asking you questions, they're asking us questions.
And one more point that I'd just like to reinforce that Dan mentioned, the intent with this is not to build a giant aspirational plan that we need to go, you know, find an extra $20 or $30 million to implement. The intent for this is to be more or less revenue-neutral or fairly close to it and something that we can implement in a much shorter timeline.
Great. So it's constrained by, we're basically, where we're, our starting point is where we're at right now with budgets and fleet and so forth.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've been trying to refrain from calling it a, a study, just call it a plan because, you know, the, the goal is to implement this using, you know, the normal processes for, for doing service changes between 2022 and 2024. So it's not a hypothetical. It's, the goal is to work towards changes that will be implemented in the next two to four years. Just to be clear about that.
All right, thank you to all. Are there any further questions for either Mr. Walker, Mr. Constantino, or for staff? All right, seeing none, thank you. I found your presentation extremely informative. I'm really excited to see, you know, what you come up with and then, you know, what the community comes up with based on that. So thank you so much for your time and for your presentation. I look forward to speaking with you again.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
So much.
All right, thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to our next item, Legisdar 62326, Updates from the Chairs of the Transportation Commission and Transportation Policy and Planning Board. Ann Kovach, would you like to go first?
Sure, thank you, Tom. In terms of what we've done over the course of the past year since we had our last joint meeting, as we discussed at the last joint meeting, I think we have achieved our goal of fewer informational items on the agenda. And this has helped us be more efficient and certainly more effective. So we're focusing on things where we have some sort of action, feedback, approval, et cetera. We also implemented use of a consent agenda, and that's been very helpful in making us more efficient as well. We review our work plan quarterly, which keeps it more current. TC members really wanted to have a significantly enhanced quarterly traffic safety report. And thanks to Yang, he spent a lot of time working with the Madison Police Department, and that's given us a much more effective report that, that gives us the information that, that we need. And this is constantly being enhanced as well. Something else that I think really noticed that changes that city staff, city engineering, traffic engineering, et cetera, are bringing projects to the TC on a proactive basis, perhaps before they needed to in the past. And so we're getting an opportunity to look at projects sometimes that we wouldn't have seen at all. And sometimes we're seeing them twice, once early enough where they don't have to go back and do work over again. So I believe it's overall making it, again, more efficient. So we've really been working on being more efficient and effective in how we do our work at the TC and how we work with staff as well. And we also updated our TC handbook for some changes from the year before and also implemented the TC website so that members, new members, can use the handbook, go to the website, find all the training that they need right there in one place. Our work plan is right there. So we're trying to be, again, very efficient for everybody and not doing, you know, things at our meetings that, that they can just go ahead and do online. So, Tom, that's all I had, unless anybody has any questions or additional comments.
Any questions for TC Chair Kovach or comments? All right, seeing none, thanks, Ann. So the Transportation Policy and Planning Board has been pretty busy as well over the past year. Some of the things that we've worked on generally are trying to get items ahead of time. So we have more time to review them. That is still something that we are certainly working on. Trying to keep our meetings to reasonable length. I think we've been fairly successful in that. As far as large items that we've worked on, back in March, we concluded some lengthy discussions about the BRT East-West routing, particularly downtown and west-side sections, and ultimately made a recommendation, a locally preferred alternative that was adopted by the Common Council. So that was a, a pretty big item that we've been talking about for quite some time. We recommended adoption of a Vision Zero policy to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries within the city of Madison by 2030, and that was also adopted over the summer, I think, in mid-July. So that was another big one. And I think, you know, if folks have been paying attention, there's been, I think, was recently a press release about reducing speed limits along certain sections of East Washington Avenue. I think that's some of the first steps of that being implemented. And then more recently, I think, it was our August meeting perhaps, we made a recommendation authorizing a two-year contract with, you know, Jared Walker and Associates for this metro network design study that we just heard our first presentation on. So that's fairly exciting, or it's very exciting. And then we also recommended the, authorize an 18-month contract with Tool for complete streets consulting services. And I think so both of those items were also adopted by the Common Council. So four pretty large items this year, I think, that we can really be proud of and then be proud of all the work that staff has done for us. We've also had quite a few conversations around parking, around budgets, and then, of course, a number of updates on what the different transportation agencies are doing to respond to COVID-19. That's not exclusive, but those were the sort of the main, the main items that I came up with by looking through our past agendas, notes, and meeting minutes. So are there any questions about that, comments, things folks would like to mention that I maybe forgot to? Please use the hand raise feature. All right, seeing none. We'll move on then to Legisdar 62327, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion Challenges for the Commission and the Board. I think Tom is going to kick us off on that.
Okay, so I guess I'm up. So, um, I, this, um, part of our, we want to use an equity lens in all of our decision-making. And we want to, it's really embedded in the mission of the Department of Transportation to be considering equity and inclusion in all of our decision-making, but also in all of our policymaking and, and interaction with residents. A little earlier this year, late spring, I'm going to say, there, there's some individuals that came with some concerns. The concerns, we've always kind of had challenges with, and we know that we have challenges with obtaining good input from underrepresented communities. And then also distributing our capital or our resources in ways that are equitable throughout the city. But in these discussions, it's, it also became evident that sometimes it's hard for us to, perhaps in our, as we receive testimony on issues that we might not, as a committee and also as staff, fully hear some of the, you know, opinions that are given by neighborhoods and testimonies. And sometimes the deliberation within our committees might revolve around some of us achieving city goals or city values. And some of the testimony that we've heard isn't integrated as much into the deliberation as possible. So after a couple of meetings, I think it became evident that I didn't understand or we needed to write down what are our, what are our challenges. So we wrote down some of our challenges in draft format. And Ann, I think, distributed a copy today. So some of those challenges have to do with us as we influence transportation improvements throughout the city. But part of those challenges involve us. I performed a, a couple of phone calls to, like, for instance, Equity by Design and Jaclyn Bogus about how are they working with different committees, you know, within the city? You know, to kind of, I'm going to say, maybe coach the committee on, on ways that they could include equity and inclusion in the deliberation process. Right now, Equity by Design is working with the Sustainability Committee, and I think they have a five-to-seven-part series. It's, it's something like that. And I've also talked with Annette Miller and both Jaclyn Bogus of NAMI. So where it stands right now is, we took some of the challenges that we're experiencing, or we've heard people say that we're experiencing. And I've asked for some comments or some guidance from DCR. Could the Department of Civil Rights help us and give us some suggestions on what our next steps could be, you know? With the potential of maybe we could have a consultant come in and help us or give us guidance similar to what the Sustainability Community or Committee is doing. I haven't heard back on those options from DCR. But I do want to use them as a, kind of as a resource as we just, not only just get testimony and input from communities of color and underserved communities, not only into our distribution of resources and improvements, but also as we deliberate, you know, and consider some of the testimony that we've received. So is that a fair summary? There have been other people that have been involved in some of the discussions that have been heard. Is that a fair summary, Ann or Tom or others?
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I just, very good summary, Tom. Thank, thank you very much. It's certainly been top of mind for all of us. And as I've been trying to work with Lila and the mayor's office to get the required disparity on the Transportation Commission, it's actually in the ordinance, you know, we have to find other ways to try and achieve this. And I, and I just want to emphasize, there was a handout in Legisdar, thanks to John Strange. I went and found the different sections that, that remind us that the transportation system has to be equitable and that we have to work to eliminate any disparities that people of color experience and people of low-income experience. So it's, it's not just our personal desire to want to do this. It's, you know, as Tom said, it's in the Department of Transportation ordinance. It's his job. It's in the Transportation Policy and Planning ordinance. It's in the Transportation Commission ordinance, and it's, it's our job. And it's, you know, we, we've had a small group talking about how difficult it is for us to, to achieve this. So it's really just a first step, isn't it, Tom? Trying to identify the challenges. And, and we certainly appreciate input from anybody who has other topics and recognize that this is something we're working on citywide. But we have this obligation, and we've talked about that. We also have this obligation under the transportation ordinances to be mindful of this each and every time we meet and think about things. So, thanks.
Thanks, Ann. And so, I mean, I'll add two things. One, just, you know, it's, it's actually written right at the top of our agenda. Consider who benefits, who is burdened, who does not have a voice at the table? How can policymakers mitigate unintended consequences? And I think those are things we should be thinking about with everything that we do, of course. But the other thing that I will say is that there are vacancies on both bodies. I know there is one on the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, and if I'm not mistaken, two on the Transportation, three on the Transportation Commission. You know, you know, many of us have an extensive networks of different types of people, very diverse groups that we work with, not just in transportation in the city, but in other parts of our lives. So I guess I would put the challenge out to all of us to think about the folks that we know who might be interested or have the time to participate that would help us improve the diversity on, on both bodies. So please keep that in mind. And of course, it's, it's nice to have full rosters as well. So I guess, Tom or Ann, let's see, do you have anything else to add, or anyone else would like to chime in with a comment or a question?
I think I would like to, I've been trying to explore options with DCR, and they're trying to connect me through the RESG Resource Group. But it might be worthwhile just to hear from the commission or the committee feelings towards, is there value in having a facility come in and do a couple of sessions on what does it mean to do active listening? How do we deliberate things that we, you see what I'm, what I'm saying? Is there value or is there interest in moving in that direction?
If anyone would like to make a comment or go ahead and use the hand raise feature. I see Baltazar here. He says up. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, and you know, thanks, Tom and, you know, Tom and Ann for, for bringing this up. I, you know, I think this is, this is very, very important, and, you know, I, I think this is gonna help us move forward into, you know, doing, doing a work that, that respects and welcomes everybody in the community, you know. So, I mean, you're preaching to the choir here, so thank you very much. And, you know, that's, that's one of the things that, I think, that's why I like that presentation that the group gave before, because they were talking about different, you know, some of the biggest issues that are really affecting the whole community, not just one specific group. So, you know, thanks for doing this, and yeah, I think this is gonna require a lot of work. And, you know, as a, as a, as a committee, I, I will probably, you know, as Baltazar, I will probably support the work that we might need to do in this area. And thank you.
Thank you, Baltazar. Robert, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, not only would I want to hear and learn whatever I can learn by having somebody present to me, explain, you know, the limitations and the, that we currently have, and how we might be able to overcome some of those limitations, but one of the things that I've been hearing recently, in fact, as recently as noon today, something that I think Alder Foster had forwarded on to a few of us to say, hey, if you have time, look at this. I was told how important it is to pay people from the community who have, you know, the outlook and the contacts in that community to come be part of our group or, or, or advise us, consult with us, whatever. You know, there's, I'm never going to live the experience of somebody necessarily from some neighborhoods. I'm not even, you know, I'm, I'm outside of a lot of the neighborhoods anyway in Madison. But that, as we talked about, and as was in some of the documentation tonight, the people who do this, who, who have this experience, maybe don't always have the time to volunteer for committees or whatever, and we may have to consider, you know, paying somebody for their knowledge, basically, to come be part of, you know, like, part of our group or a consultant to our group on an ongoing basis. And I guess I just want to throw that out there, that this may not be something that we can just get with volunteers or a one-time presentation to this body. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Ann Kovitch, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's really important, and I certainly welcome the opportunity, as Robert said, to, to learn and, and while I, I can't put myself in other people's shoes, try and remember how to think about it. But as I was listening to the presentation on the network design study, it occurred to me that we have the same problem at the Transportation Commission, and I imagine you do at the Policy Board as well, and that is because we can't get people to come to us and give us their opinion all the time, or be on our body and, and a representative, a member, that we have to go get that outreach. And Robert, whether we pay people or, or how we, how we do that, we have to figure out how to get to those underrepresented communities and to get their feedback. And, and then Baltazar, as you were talking about, we have to really listen. You know, we can't, you know, be always thinking about what we think is most important. We have to really ask them what they think is most important so that we can follow what we're supposed to do and, and make sure we eliminate those disparities. So, you know, this outreach that we're thinking about, maybe as we're working on the network redesign study, we can learn some things from urban assets or from other people as to how can we do a better job of outreach? Because I don't think we're ever going to get everybody we want on our commission or on our policy board, so we're going to have to constantly do that outreach. So, Robert, really, I mean, very interesting ideas. And unfortunately, Grant, I, I got the email on that webinar after it was already over. So, you know, look for more opportunities to have, to learn about things like that, too. So, but very important, Tom, and welcome any opportunities that we can, we can take to, to learn how to do a better job with this.
Maybe a follow-up comment. As I talk with the, like, Annette Miller and, like, part of it's outreach, but I'm going to say almost part of it's in-reach, you know? How do we deliberate? And I was hoping that I could just get one person to come for one session and, you know, everything's fixed. But as I talk with people, they feel like it's more of a, it's a longer process. Like, I think with the Sustainability Program, it's like five to seven modules, you know, which I, but I guess really anything that's of value is more than just an event, right? It's a process. And so i-if we were to pursue this, it probably would end up being a process within our committees, not so much of an event. So, tell you what, we can move on with the meeting, but I would be interested if you have thoughts. Please send me emails. And I would, I've been interacting with, with DCR, and I was hoping that they could give some, some guidance that we could have a more substantive discussion. But they will, you know, I'm sure in the next couple of weeks. And if you have thoughts, you could give me some emails. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom. Yang, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. I just want to quickly mention that, you know, a few of the Commission and Board members has sent staff recommendations, you know, for really good speakers on the topic. So I think that's really good. So thank you for that. Hopefully, you know, that can be fitted in as well. You know, as, as Tom mentioned, that hopefully this will be a kind of ongoing process, not just, you know, one-time or a serious event, but really we should look for opportunities to keep it going, keep, because, you know, the members will always rotate on both bodies, and we really want to, you know, keep it going and looking out for opportunities to bring in, you know, speakers once in a while or other training opportunities. Thank you.
Thanks, Yang. Alder Kimball, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention that this isn't an issue just for the TC and TPPB or just for committees. This is a structural issue with the city government. And a year ago, the Task Force on Government Structure wrapped up two years of in-depth study outreach and came up with recommendations. And most of what we discussed on that task force had to do with exactly this. And it's not just a question of outreach or in-reach. It's a question of representation of everybody in the City of Madison. And one of their strongest recommendations was to set up an Office of Resident Engagement and Neighborhood Support so that people don't have to come to us at City Hall, so that the city is present in neighborhoods throughout the city and in touch. City workers and, and, I mean, as Alders, we live in neighborhoods, so we are in touch. But there are formal relation and structural relationships with folks in the neighborhoods, and we know what's going on. We don't have to hire consultants to come and tell us what people in this or that neighborhood are thinking or experiencing, because we have city agencies represented in one way or another in the neighborhoods that we know have not only been underserved, but like, really, under, under, underdeveloped, actually, because our priorities have been elsewhere. So this is something that, you know, all of us need to work on and advocate for, and I appreciate that it's a, that we're having this discussion here. But I just want us to realize that we, if this is something we really feel strongly about, we have to push for these bigger structural changes in the city, citywide, because we can't just have committee by committee hiring consultants to come and tell us how to, you know, get people to, you know, get better input or to go do the input for us and, and come. We have to actually change how we, how we're structured and how we operate.
Yeah, I agree. And, and there's probably, I'm going to separate this into kind of two things. One, one is how do we get the, how do we get the input, right? And I, I think that what you're saying, Alder Kimball, is correct, you know? It's a structural thing, you know? How do we get people on our committees? How do we get them to our meetings and all that? The second thing is, is more of a, how do we, once we get the input, how do we interact with it? And how do we use it in the decision-making? And I, I think the consultant, if we were to go that way, like with Equity by Design or something, I think that's the focus of what they're doing with the Sustainability Committee. You see what I'm saying? So it's, it's really a two-part issue, and one is like the larger, how do we get the input? By getting people on our committees, but also getting them to our things. But then, once we get it, how do we interact and deliberate with it? And so that was kind of the second one. It's a challenging problem.
All right. Thank you, Alder Kimball. Thank you, Tom. Margaret, you're up next.
Regarding the vacancies on these two committees, I'll just speak in general terms here that I understand that the process involves names being forwarded and to the mayor's office, and then names being forwarded to the City Council for approval. Well, one thing, I've, I've served on city committees for well over a decade now, and frankly, for most folks, myself included, this process is oftentimes mysterious. One notable exception is the citizen, the most recently committed, created commission for civilian, the civilian review board, where the process was very open. And names were very publicly solicited. So I'm curious, and this doesn't require an answer now, but if the chairs of the committee, if Ann and Tom have suggestions, if the Alders have suggestions, on what is the best way to get names through, get people through this process? Because as far as I'm aware, we have had applicants for some of these openings, and those applications are getting stalled in some fashion. And I've seen it, you know, over the years with a lot, I'm not going to point out any, you know, particular person. I've seen it, you know, happen for a lot of different reasons. It's happened to me. So better guidance to, you know, when you say, help us do the outreach, we need help understanding what this particular mayor and this particular council's process is and how we can assist people who are interested in serving actually getting through the process successfully.
Thank you, Margaret. There's quite a bit to think about there. Ann Kovitch, go ahead.
I had to unmute myself, sorry. The City Council just recently passed the resolution that was talking about what Rebecca was talking about with, with regard to setting up the, the neighborhood outreach centers, if you will. But since that will take a while to do, they approved immediately creating this administrative, administrative services team consisting of staff from the Common Council, Mayor's Office, information technology, city attorney, and city clerk, and can begin the work of centralizing BCC support in consistent and equitable way. So I'm wondering if, Margaret, maybe that group can't, won't, by its very nature, help with this process? And, and I would guess, Grant and Rebecca, maybe that this group is designed to help expedite that process? So I was pleased to see that and, and hopeful, Margaret, that that will help in that regard.
Thanks, Ann. All right, are there any further comments, questions, or discussion about this particular item? It's really something we'll all be seeing again. Tom, it looks like you're talking, are you doing some, or? You're muted, just so you know.
No, sometimes when I type, I move my electronic.
All right, I do the same thing, just checking. All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to our next item. Legisdar 62328, update on proposed amendments to Madison Dental Ordinance Section 33.56, Transportation Commission.
I can give an update on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Alder Foster.
So I think as most folks are aware, I had been working on a draft for an updated ordinance for the Transportation Commission. I've been working with Attorney Strange on that for several months now and working with staff on it. The primary driver for that for me was having a number of items that I think would have either ultimately ended up going through the Transportation Commission or seemed that would have been, should have gone through the Transportation Commission, but because of the, the way that the ordinance is currently structured, which is quite tight and specific about what the duties are of the Transportation Commission, I think there was a lack of clarity around whether that should happen or there is sort of a catch-all caveat in the ordinance that says, or any other items that are referred there by the Board or Common Council, et cetera. And so ultimately, a number And so ultimately, a number of things were, did get referred there, but because it wasn't maybe expected that they'd be going there early on, it ended up negatively impacting the timeline for those items and just kind of caused some confusion and frustration for, for folks because of that. So when I talked with Attorney Strange about it, he informed me that the reason that the ordinance was crafted the way it was was really out of a desire to keep the Transportation Commission from getting into policy work and really trying to keep the policy work with the TPPB and the Transportation Commission focused more on the implementation side of things, and that it was not really intended to limit the scope of what the, the commission was, was seeing in front of them. So we began working on a draft to change that, and the original concept was really just to kind of invert the current ordinance. So instead of saying, these are the six things that the TC does, plus anything else that's sent their way, it would be written in a more inclusive way that says basically, any transportation issues, go to the Transportation Commission, and then potentially having some carve-outs of specific things that don't need to go there. I think in my conversations with staff, that, that concept proposed, or I created some new questions for staff about, okay, well, how, you know, what's the scope of all transportation decisions then? So we kind of paused on, on that approach and have been having a number of meetings to really work at, what I think ultimately will be the solution, which is really just getting some more detailed definition around the kinds of transportation decisions that are happening today, whether that's at a staff level, with engineering or even other, other bodies, and working to get that in a, in a more detailed document that I think there's some consensus between staff and myself and Attorney Strange that we could have that kind of more detailed descriptions in more of a policy document that could be reviewed, updated and approved without needing to go back and change the ordinance anytime a new thing comes up. So I think about the personal delivery devices, for example, that wasn't, that's not explicitly called out in the ordinance because we didn't even know about a thing called a personally delivery device when the ordinance was written, and yet I think everybody assumed that that kind of a decision should be going through the Transportation Commission. So moving to a system where we have more of a policy document that's updated regularly, when something like that comes up, we could review it and TPPB could recommend what happens with that kind of an item? Is it a staff decision? Should it go through the Transportation Commission, et cetera? So that's the approach that we're taking at this point. Just met with, with TE, I think last week or the week before. I think we're getting real close on getting some of those things defined. I think at least between myself and them, there's a lot of agreement around which things should be staff decisions, what things should come to TC. And so we want to be able to do the same thing with metro and parking, although it seems like that's generally a lot more straightforward already, so probably won't take a lot of work to get that, that clarified. And then probably the bigger work is to do that with engineering, since they do a lot of the new road design, et cetera. And so we want to make sure that we, one of the documents that we discussed at our, at our previous joint meeting was this idea of, you know, when even when a decision is made, what level of changes can happen at a staff level without needing to come back for reapproval, et cetera? So that's, that's probably the biggest chunk of work that's left before we're able to bring forward a draft for consideration. So that's, I guess, the overall summary. I guess I'm hopeful that within probably a couple of months, we can have a draft that we would then bring, bring forward to both Transportation Commission and TPPB for input.
Thanks, Alder Foster. Questions? Chris, go ahead.
This is probably a good change in some ways. It also raises some questions for me as a member of TC, just about how to strike the right balance, because I think we already occasionally get items that really don't require much review by TC and, and sometimes just spend a lot of time hearing about them and talking through them just to come to that realization that there wasn't much of a decision that needed to be made. And I think seeing many more of those items on the agenda more frequently could just create more backlog. So I just think it's something to keep in mind, the question of how do we, how do we know what are the right things that we need to, to spend time on versus just sort of, you know, move on and, and don't need to really discuss much or review?
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and I think one of the primary goals of this work is to make sure that we're not just adding a bunch of stuff to the Transportation Commission. I think nobody's interested in adding, you know, additional detailed review of things that don't need that. So there's been a lot of attention to say, let's make sure that we don't kind of upset that balance or have staff feeling like they need to bring things that really can and should be handled at a, a staff level. So part of that is that there, I think ultimately, there's always going to need to be, you know, a fair amount of staff discretion on this, where, you know, it's not a blanket requirement, but if and when an item is more controversial or that they, they really would like input or support from TC, they're able to bring it there, but that it's not a kind of blanket requirement across the board. But one example of something that, that, you know, wasn't explicitly written in there that came up for us at, at council over the last year was the question of retrofitting sidewalks, for example. And so that was an example where ultimately we had, you know, pretty contentious discussion at council about it, and it had never gone through Transportation Commission at all. And I think in that case, there would have been a lot of value to have public input and have the Transportation Commission weigh in on that question and would have really helped the council be more prepared for that decision. And so that was one of the, one of the examples where it highlighted, oh, well, it didn't explicitly say that if there's a project that may or may not include sidewalks, that that should come to TC. The other thing is that we've already, you know, aside from, from an ordinance change, that's actually part of what has led to engineering bringing their list of projects, like they just recently did, and reviewing with us to be able to sort of try and cover that, say, hey, here are the projects that we're going to be doing over the next year. Are there any on here that you would like to see that we weren't planning on bringing you? So we're already, have already sort of implemented some of those things procedurally to try and address that. And then the last thing I'd say is, out of these conversations, also what has really come out very clearly is the, the need for more detailed policy guidance. So a lot of the things that might need to come to TC are because there isn't really good explicit policy direction on things right now, and so staff is in a position where they, they aren't really sure which way they should be designing something. And so to the point where we could have more clear policy guidance on items, there's, then we could also, staff would have clear direction, they could move on things, and the need to bring it to TC would probably be much less.
Yeah, thanks, and thanks for starting to tackle it.
All right, thanks, Chris. Yang, go ahead.
I just want to thank Alder Foster and Alder Campbell for spending a lot of time with staff, you know, really looking to this, and also for really listening to staff feedback and incorporating a lot of the staff input into the decision-making. So I think that's very important. And yeah, I think, you know, the, the new direction, focusing on the, a policy document that gave us, you know, more flexibility, I think that's a really good one. And yeah, like I agree with Chris said, that we have to be careful so that, you know, we, we really find a really good balancing spot, so we, you know, we're not creating new problems. You know, so far, I felt confident that, you know, we are moving in the right direction. So really appreciate the time and effort Alder Foster and Alder Campbell has put into, put into this.
All right, thanks, Yang. Any further questions, comments or discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, thanks to all. Next item then is Legis 62329, early program recommendations from the Traffic Calming Subcommittee. So I guess I'll just begin, let me get the right document up here. Okay, by just revisiting the, the purpose of the, of the Subcommittee, as was adopted, the Traffic Calming Subcommittee shall be responsible for developing and issuing a final report to be presented to the Transportation Commission and the Transportation Policy and Planning Board that identifies opportunities to improve outcomes and processes related to traffic calming, safety enhancements, and pedestrian and bicycle system enhancement, enhancements in the city of Madison, including but not limited to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program and the Pedestrian Bicycle Enhancement Program, with a goal of equitable distribution of resources that improves safety and encourages increased walking and biking across the city. So we were supposed to initially meet, I think, in, in mid-March, but because of COVID, that was delayed by several months. But we have met several times and we've made quite a bit of progress. And what we wanted to bring to you today was the document that was shared. We sort of condensed what we feel are goals and components of an effective program or perhaps programs, and we would like the joint bodies' feedback on those two sections to sort of give us some direction, are we going in the right direction, are we missing some things? We'll be meeting again tomorrow to review your feedback and to then discuss what our next steps will be. So quickly going through that document, goals of an effective programs is, ineffective program would be that it is outcomes-focused, being safer, that it encourages walking, biking and transit, that it is equitable, that it is all ages and abilities, all areas of the city, all kinds of roadways, local collector and arterials, that it has good public process and access in terms of how issues are reported, how residents can advocate for project selection, the process be transparent, or I should say, the program be transparent, but also the process, that the program be accessible, inclusive and have good outreach and engagement. And the fourth goal would be that it is efficient, that is a good use of time for staff, commissioners, Alders, residents, looking at things in an area corridor intervention rather than street by street or block by block, and that it be cost-effective. Those are the four main goals with their sub-points. Hopefully you have access to that document or had a chance to look through it. Components of an effective program would be requests, getting issues into the program efficiently, creative, flexible, a program that sort of puts all options on the table, doesn't just maybe considers, as we maybe heard about in the metro transit network redesign, considers the radical options and maybe not necessarily selects those, but considers all things. Evaluating requests, determining solutions and interventions that it prioritizes, or that it effectively prioritizes recommended interventions, has good public input, decision-making, implementation, it evaluates effectiveness of individual interventions, including resident feedback and satisfaction, that it has a mechanism for, a mechanism for assessing, reviewing and making changes to the program, and that of course, that it has funding. So that is the, the condensed version of what we've been talking about that we would like, that we wanted to bring to you to get your feedback on. So I guess I'll open the floor to questions, comments, other feedback. Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. So yeah, I, thanks for sharing this document, it's great to see what's coming out of the group. I think it was set up originally to address some really clear issues that were, that the, the traffic calming program was raising, specifically around, you know, traffic calming being implemented piecemeal, road by road, issues with sort of like the squeaky wheel against the oil sort of approach to, to, to the program. The, the thing that really caught my attention was the first bullet point on the outcome-focused piece of this, and it seems like it's a significant shift in the program, because my understanding of the current program is it's really pretty specifically focused on speed management, that the traffic calming program is really oriented around identifying speed issues and, and coming up with the, the most appropriate way to address those. And this shift towards actually safety outcomes and walking and biking transit would be, would be a, a major change. Is, is that intentional? Am I misreading that? I wonder if any, anybody has thoughts on that?
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I would, I would say it's intentional, although I don't think we had a conversation that kind of, you know, said what you just said. I think it's, it's an interesting observation. I think that this is a result of a lot of really good productive discussion. And I think something worth mentioning here that's not on the, the sheet, but that we did want to share with you all as well, is that we, at our last meeting, we did agree that we're, we think there'd be value in, in looking at one program or at least one entry point where we might have different categories of, you know, how we spend the money, but really moving away from what we have today, which is a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, that is essentially what, what you said, Chris, is speed management and really specifically for local streets, like we don't even really use that for, you know, basically the speed hump program, but doesn't even really apply to arterials or anything else. So it's not even a broad speed management program, it's really just local streets where people complain about speeding, should we give them speed humps? Is what that program is. And then we have the pet bike enhancement, which is much broader and really is, I think, focused around the safety improvements as well as enhancing access for walking and biking. And so I think as we imagine the whole suite of what we should, what should we be spending our money on, that's where these, these are the two things that really got to still down for us.
All right, thanks, Alder Foster. Bill Bremer, go ahead.
I'd just like to add, so the other people who are not on the Subcommittee are aware, we have spent some time looking at other communities around the country on programs that they have established and, and how they are functioning, and particularly of how input is received and so forth, and how broad they are and types of facilities they're doing. So it's, it's, we're trying to take advantage of reaching out to other, other communities.
Thank you, Bill, that is an excellent point. Ann Kovac, go ahead.
I just want to follow up on what Chris was saying and what Bill was saying, that some of the other cities had their programs designed around areas as opposed to neighborhoods or blocks, and that Chris was really addressing some of the issues we've specifically run across where we take block, action on this block, and then that pushes it over to the next block. Then we take action there and it pushes it over to the next block. So we really needed.
Thank you, Ann. Are there, okay, Robert, go ahead.
Thank you. This, I'm glad Chris asked the question he asked. I think it's actually really good that it's being expanded to be more than just a, should we add speed humps or not to a particular street? I do look at this, and I'm hoping that if, I've heard a couple people say that maybe there's other programs in other cities that, that have fleshed out some of these procedures, processes, whatever. And the reason I say that is because as I look at this list, at least to begin with, it.
Going into that direction, figuring some of those more detailed aspects of it out.
Thank you, Harold. Yeah, we've certainly updated this document, I think after every single meeting and even during the meetings, and it's been through several iterations and changed, and it's been wordsmithed several times as well. All right, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to add on to what Harold said, we, we have done more work than this as well, we just really wanted to share this as sort of the highest level, the skeleton, as you said, Robert, and didn't, we did consider bringing some additional info today, but really wanted to make sure that we had things more fully baked before we, we brought them for, for feedback. So yeah, our intent really was to just focus on the high-level goals, make sure that there weren't any, you know, big gaps or any issues that folks had, but I think we've been making try. been making tremendous progress. And yeah, it's a huge effort, but also it's just so desperately needed and can really do a lot of good if we make some of the changes that we've been talking about. So I feel super confident that we can do it. And I think it'll be much better for the folks on the commission, for staff, and then for people in the community as well. So I feel really good about it.
Thank you, Alder Foster. So are there any further comments, suggestions, any gaps that you may see in the document that you've seen here, what we've been talking about? Obviously, if you think of something after the meeting, you can email any one of us on the Committee or on the Subcommittee. You can email me directly, or Patrick, you can email him as well. One thing I did want to mention is that under the duty section of the document that created the Subcommittee, we were initially supposed to have a final report prepared by October 15th, obviously with our several month delay in getting started due to COVID, that's not going to happen. So likely going to see in front of both bodies a request to extend that date very soon. And then, so there are no other comments. We will move on to the next item. All right, seeing none. We will move on to Legis Ar 62330, status of action items from the last joint TC TPPB meeting. I think, Ann Kovach, you were going to take care of that.
Yes. There was a document distributed that showed our action items from the last joint meeting, which was August of 2019. Three of the seven action items have been accomplished. The remaining four action items are in process. And we've pretty much touched on all of those things that are still in process because with the exception of TPPB Subcommittee, which I know Tom is working on and the TPPB is working on, the other items really are wrapped into the effort that Grant was describing, which is the TC ordinance. So we made a lot of progress and always good to hold ourselves accountable with keeping track of where we're going and where we want to go. Any questions from anybody on those?
All right, seeing no questions. Thank you, Ann. Move on to our next item, Legis Ar 62331, action items for this joint meeting, things we would like to work on before our next meeting. Ann Kovach, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I've just been noting as we've gone through the evening that we've all agreed that we're going to follow up on equity. That may be separately, it may be more efficient to do it jointly. So we'll need to follow up on that. The TC ordinance, Grant said we'll see that back in a couple of months. Again, we'll have to decide, do we want to do that jointly? Is that more efficient? Or do we want to have separate conversations about that? Traffic calming Subcommittee, obviously that's going to come back to both bodies, again, either separately or jointly. And the network redesign study, that's something that I'd like to talk some more about, you know, how, are there things that the TC can have input on, not necessarily in a joint fashion, but I think the meeting today was great and having this other group with the status update, although it is certainly the purview of the Policy Board, that it was very helpful because it's within the purview of the Transportation Commission to approve route changes and bus stop changes and things like that. So again, I think, Tom, there's some natural follow-up there on all, you know, those major issues that we covered on tonight. So we can maybe work offline on how we want to draft them up as active items, but unless somebody sees anything else that I missed.
Thanks, Ann. That sounds good. Getting an echo here. Alder Campbell, go ahead.
So one thing TPPB had planned on doing this year, which we didn't do, and I think TC would have a role in this too, is being really proactive and engaged with the budget process. And we had to do that, you know, to get that rolling, I think in February. But we just never did. And then COVID, and then, you know, 2020. So I think it would be good for, and I believe we had planned to have another joint meeting around the budget, right? The TC, we had planned another meeting around that. So let's try to do that again for maybe early February. Sometime in February, give us a month to get over, you know, the budget this have been gone through and see things settle out. But I think that's really, is really vital for these bodies to be working with staff as they develop their budget requests.
Thank you, Alder Campbell. And I think the timing of that may work well for some of the other things that Ann mentioned earlier. So that might be something we talk about at our next, you know, our next item here on timing of a future meeting. Tom, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is maybe more of a clarification. I talked with the mayor this morning, and I suspect that she might be echoing perhaps what you're expressing, Alder Campbell, in that many of our street improvements have to do with a certain criteria of pavement condition and, you know, how old they are, whereas other communities have kind of a broader or more comprehensive prioritization of capital projects, particularly street projects. And I think we've discussed this about Minneapolis. Are you thinking that, and she said that she would like us to continue, like me, to move forward on that, is that kind of in line with your thought process? Or are you thinking more specifically about, you know, TE's budget and parking's budget? Or are you thinking more about the larger capital expenditures that we're using on our streets and how to have a broader prioritization process?
I think ideally I'm talking about all of it. Obviously, you know, implementing Vision Zero in the budget process, which, you know, shifts us away from pavement condition investments and more towards safety investment. But also, just more generally, you know, as we listen to the Traffic Calming Subcommittee report, thinking about like not just capital budgets, but operating budgets and where staff is deployed and what they're doing and what kind of adjustment you can make as Director of Transportation to the policy and planning decisions that are being made at the Board and Commission level. And really helping, having those conversations early on about what it means for staff, what it means for capital budget, what it means for, you know, other aspects of the operating budget to actually implement the things that we're working on.
Yeah, so we can do that. I think you had mentioned February. Typically, we start to think about the capital budget in May, so that would give us a couple of months to get some input and thoughts before we submit capital budget in May.
Yeah, that's the idea. That's the idea, is to have, be having those discussions ongoing. So it's not just you presenting us something maybe in May about, this is what we're going to ask the mayor for, or this is what we asked the mayor for, and us, you know, just having it be a more collaborative process.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Alder Campbell. Any further comments or discussion on this item? All right. Tom, I think your hand's just up from before, so I'm going to lower it. All right. Our last item then, Legis Ar 62332, timing of next joint meeting and future agenda items for that meeting. I think we pretty closely covered that already, but I guess formally, we can discuss it. How do folks feel about shooting for an early February joint meeting? The items that I have written down from what I just heard are continuing the equity discussion, the TC ordinance, Traffic Calming Subcommittee hopefully report, but we'll see how long, what kind of an extension we ask for. The network redesign study update, and then, of course, budgets. So thoughts?
We will be moving, I guess I should have raised my hand. I apologize.
You're fine. Go ahead, Tom.
So tonight, we got to have a pretty informative discussion from the Metro Route Restructure. And soon, we will have the Complete Streets and Green Streets, and that will be going through a kind of an alternatives process as well. And so that will impact, it will be led by the TPPB, but it will impact decisions made by the TC. And that contract is working its way through the pipeline now too. And so I'm just alerting you that that's another, I'm going to say, exciting thing, you know, to be able to prioritize our roadways and understand the typologies, model hierarchies.
All right. Thank you, Tom. So if no one else has comments, okay, Harold, go ahead.
Sorry, just, I didn't take notes on the timeline of the network redesign study, but I have a vague memory that like the first step will be done in December already. So I'm wondering if February might almost be a little bit too late, but I guess that also comes down to, is that something for a joint meeting or is that a TC, TPPB discussion or not? So that might be worth looking into again and confirming the timeline for that.
Yeah, and I think also with what Tom just said about with the Complete Streets, Green Streets situation, perhaps there will be a few things in a couple of months here that would be useful for a joint meeting. We could potentially, we could have as many as we want, obviously. You know, we could have a shorter one in December if that's appropriate and just cover those two or three things, or even, you know, even just one item, and then have another one in early February that maybe focuses more on budget because that could be a more extensive discussion. Don't want to pack too much into that meeting, assuming we have it. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I just, being a crossover member and reflecting a lot on the ordinances and what the sort of split in duties is supposed to be between TPPB and TC, I think there's always value in having us come together, but I just, I think we should be a little bit careful of having too many, we're thinking of and seeing as joint sort of items. I mean, everything, every transportation policy will have an impact to TC in terms of asset body that needs to decide how it's actually implemented. So I guess just a, just a broad statement that let's just be a little bit careful before we just like, I mean, anything, we could kind of all of a sudden say, oh yeah, that'd be a good topic for doing. So I think one of the other alternatives that we've talked about too is just being explicit about inviting members of one body and the other. So like, maybe we have the transit thing at TPPB in December, but we put out an explicit invitation to TC members to come in and, you know, being and listen in and even be able to ask questions, et cetera. So there might be some other mechanical ways that we can accomplish it. Just, I think it will be important since the whole design of the two bodies was sort of intentional in a certain way, let's just not mush them into one body at the end of the day accidentally.
All right. Thanks, Alder Foster. Ann Kovach, go ahead.
Thanks. Grant, you had suggested that the TC members be invited to the October 19th TPPB meeting, since there's going to be, I suppose, there's budget presentation scheduled. So that's an example of what you were talking about, where we could maybe come and just listen to that part. And I think there are going to be times when, and maybe the TC ordinance discussion might be better off at, you know, separately done at the TC and the TPPB, because we may come at it from a different point of view. And we may want to have separate discussions first and may end up having a joint discussion at a later time. So I agree with you. I think it's not always good for us to have the wide group together. But I think the network, the Transit Network Redesign Study is one that clearly impacts both of us. And when we have the opportunity to have a presentation like tonight, it would be great to take advantage of the TC being able to hear that as well. It was very valuable tonight. So, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Ann. All right. Is there anything further on this item? Comments or questions? Seeing none, that is all we have for the evening. So I think we need to adjourn one body at a time. So, Ann, if you'd like to-
Transportation Commission, sure. If I could have a motion to adjourn from someone on the Transportation Commission? Shout out?
Make a motion for adjournment.
Bridgette has a motion and-
I'll second it. Sure.
Okay. Motion by Bridgette and seconded by Bill. We'll assume unanimous consent vote unless we see any hands raised in opposition. Okay, motion carries. Tom?
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the Transportation Policy and Planning Board?
Move to adjourn.
All right, move by Margaret. I see a second by Robert. Hold us in favor of adjourned the Transportation Policy and Planning Board meeting. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Tripoli, it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a NO vote, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.